Welcome to the Planning Board Hybrid Meeting. This is September 23, 2024. My name is Art Spru, the Chair of the Planning Board. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. I don't hear or see anybody. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that the person who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 520710156, or join the meeting via online Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on the Chatham TV formerly Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. I'd like to begin with a roll call. Catherine, Catherine Halpern?
Present.
And Warren Crane?
Warren Crane, present.
Bob Werschafter is absent. Charlene Greenhalgh?
Charlene Greenhalgh, here.
Frank Shear?
Present.
And Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, present.
And Art Spru is present. All right, I'd like to begin with the minutes, reviewing the minutes of the August 26, 2024 meeting. Are there any comments by the Board members?
I just had one minor correction, which I already told Annie about, Leech Basin, the proper spelling. It's not L-E-E-C-H, it's L-E-A-C-H.
Yeah.
Yes.
I only had one. It's a clarification on the second last line where it says, feeling that the space is marked on the plan by the storage area could not be considered spaces. I view you should replace the word "by" the storage area, replace "by" with "inside" the storage area.
Good.
By could have referred to the couple of spaces that were outside. Other than that, I'll entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval as amended.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So I'll take a roll call vote. Catherine Halpern?
Approve.
Warren Crane?
Warren Crane, approve.
Charlene Greenhalgh?
Approve.
Frank Shear?
Approve.
Bob Dubus?
Approve.
And Art Spru, I approve. All right, so for next item on the agenda is the Housing Production Plan presentation, and I'm not quite sure, Katie, if you or Gloria were going to start this?
Gloria will kick us off.
Okay. Gloria, go right ahead.
You're muted.
We can't hear you, you must be muted.
Thank you.
All right.
Sorry, I just unmuted.
You're good now.
Um, one second. Okay, so just to do a brief introduction, and our consultants from JM Goldson are here, and Laura Smead will be doing a pretty in-depth presentation about the Housing Production Plan. But just to give you guys some background, every five years, all the towns in Massachusetts go through the process of updating their housing production plan. It's linked to requirements in 40B, but we've had, our last housing production plan was done in 2018. We went through many of the same processes that we did for this one. There was community outreach and engagement. There was a housing needs assessment performed, goals and strategies. And ultimately, in 2018, the Planning Board and the Select Board adopted the plan. Now, that's a state requirement that both the Planning Board and the Select Board adopt the plan before it's submitted to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for their approval. And background on this, we applied for a grant last June for a community planning grant specifically to update the housing production plan. We got the grant. In January, we contracted with JM Goldson, and they jumped right in. The same month we contracted, we started with our kickoff meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust. We've done community forums and other outreach. We've vetted the plan every step of the way through the Affordable Housing Trust meetings. They were always open for public comment, and in fact, I think that at every meeting, we had people there who had read the plan and who had made comments, all of which were incorporated. Basically, this plan that we're working on now is a roadmap for moving forward with our housing initiatives. The Planning Board will have a role in some of those. If you've gone through the plan, you'll see at the end, there's a table of strategies and responsible parties in the Planning Board and Planning Division, as well as other town boards, and people are responsible for certain of the strategies. But really, it's a town plan, so it's something that everyone's going to get behind. And, you know, over the last five years, over the course of the 2018 plan, we've really built up our capacity, and this 2024 update hopefully will help us to prioritize and coordinate our efforts so we can really start to move forward on our housing initiatives. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Laura.
Yep. Thanks, Gloria. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, yes, so I'm Laura Smead. I'm the Senior Community Planner at JM Goldson, the firm that has been helping the town with the Housing Production Plan update. I do have a presentation to share with you all to walk you through some of the process and components of the plan, and feel free to interrupt me at any time, but we do have a time for discussion at the end as well. So the things that I'm going to be covering tonight are just introducing you a little bit to the project and what a housing production plan is and some of the benefits of it, talking briefly about some of the housing needs that we've discovered in Chatham. I'm sure there probably won't be many surprises there for you, and then covering the seven goals and forty-some-odd strategies that we've identified. I won't go through the strategies one by one, I'm only going to talk about them in kind of broad categories of what's included in the strategies, but I am happy to get into any more detail that you may want to when we get to the discussion portion of the night. And then we do hope that you will, if you feel comfortable, vote to adopt the plan. So, first of all, I just want to say a big thank you to everyone who has been involved in this plan. JM Goldson was the lead, but we also had some support from RKG Associates in terms of the housing needs assessment, the Town of Chatham's housing staff, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, and the Community Housing Partnership were all great contributors to this plan, and of course, the public as well. So, a housing production plan is, as Gloria mentioned, it's a five-year roadmap for housing in the town. It is tied to Chapter 40B requirements, which is to have 10% of your overall year-round housing stock deed restricted, that is sort of like the capital A, affordable to those at or below 80% of the area median income. That's a lot of lingo for that, but really, it goes beyond just that. It's about providing both deed-restricted affordable housing as well as just any type of housing, market rate, so-called workforce housing, housing stock types, and all of the above. So, it does need your adoption and the Select Board adoption before you can bring it to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for their approval, and it does need to meet certain guidelines in order to be eligible for their approval, and we follow those throughout the process. Some benefits of a housing production plan are, of course, better understanding your local housing needs, guiding, helping to guide local resources and decisions as you move forward, and identifying an action plan of kind of who's doing what, when, for that, and which really will help you enhance your coordination of the capacity that you've built up over time. And if you are able to make some incremental progress toward your deed-restricted affordable housing on your subsidized housing inventory, you would be eligible for some so-called safe harbor, which means that someone who might be coming in with a 40B development that you aren't as keen on could be turned away if it was deemed to not be consistent with your housing production plan goals. There are two major components to the housing production plan. Some communities house both the housing needs assessment and the housing production plan, the goals and strategies and so forth, all together in one document. Chatham splits them into two. I think it makes for some easier reading, and that's perfectly fine to do, but when you vote for adoption, you'd be sort of voting for both of those together as your housing production plan. And the housing production plan does include the goals, the strategies, the action plan, as well as a more of a summary and an executive summary of the key findings from the housing needs assessment. The framework that we use to identify those goals and strategies are starting first with your needs, trying to understand both from many different sources of data, quantitative data from, you know, the census or real estate databases and so forth, as well as more qualitative sources of data from your community, community surveys, community forums, and public feedback, both of which are very important. And that then helps us frame with you the goals that you wish to reach or strive for in the next five years, and then we get more specific with those strategies and kind of put our heads together and figure out what are some methods and creative ideas to help you get there. So we started back in January, and throughout the winter and the spring of 2024, we were working on some of that quantitative and qualitative data. So we were reaching out to the community as well as working on the first drafts of the housing needs assessment. And then, as we moved into the spring and early summer, we started to define an outline of the goals and the strategies that the Housing Trust thought made sense for the plan, and then we started drafting some of those narratives into a more complete document, and that's gone through several iterations of changes and additions, and we always carefully track all of the comments that we receive and track how we've incorporated that into the final versions of the plan. And so now, we've worked on that further throughout the summer, and we're ready to present to you all, so it's very nice to be at this stage. In terms of housing needs, we heard from just shy of, I mean, it's a little bit of a ballpark number. We talk about it as just shy of 10% of your year-round population, but we also, since we can't track individuals across different types of engagement, there could be some repeat individuals who have participated more than, say, they did the community survey and they attended the community forum, but overall, we heard from 655 separate, we call them, participation points in the process, and that's a very strong showing from your community, and we're really pleased to have, you know, about a 10% goal is what we really strive to do, and we pretty much got there. And I think actually, if we added in all of the public comments that we heard as well, that would probably tip us over the edge. In terms of what the community said from this engagement, about half of the survey respondents indicated that they couldn't afford to move to Chatham today. Some of the more pressing challenges that were flagged were a lack of year-round rentals and a lack of affordable and attainable housing. So, housing for those who wouldn't meet the qualifications for a deed-restricted unit but still can't make the leap into a market rate unit, they're kind of stuck in that middle group. And then we had some ideas for areas for further housing development, especially where you already have infrastructure with wastewater infrastructure or where it's coming. And there was some interest in allowing for more housing types in your zoning code, regulating short-term rentals, there's a lot of concern around those, permitting accessory units, which the state took care of sort of for you, and building affordable houses on the town sites. And broadly favored, we're having some more flexible zoning for the housing types that you would like to see, so helping to make the permitting a little bit easier for that, maybe have some incentives, targeting housing for employees, both seasonal workforce as well as year-round, and increasing allowable densities of houses in where it makes sense for environmental conditions, and allowing for some buy rate multifamily in certain districts. In terms of overall housing needs, this is a lot of data to take in at once, but I just wanted to call out some of the highlights from the data. So, to back up those sort of public sentiments, we do see that a lot of the housing in Chatham is single-family and a lot of it is owner-occupied, so there isn't a lot of housing diversity. A large proportion, over half of it, is for seasonal use, and there is a large number of short-term rental units as well. So, and while the vast majority of your population is in a smaller household, only about 28% of the houses available have that kind of smaller footprint, which could be a more naturally affordable way to downsize or to kind of initially get into a community. And of course, the high housing costs, 1.3 million, this is, you know, a snapshot in time that always fluctuates, but roughly 1.3 million per single-family home median sales price, and right around 2,000, 2,200 for a monthly two-bedroom rent in kind of more of the region, because it's actually really hard to get pinpoint market rate data for rentals in the outer Cape region. But, and also then, you are striving to increase that number of your subsidized housing inventory, so right now you are at 4.8%, you're trying to get to 10%, but as you can see on the left, there's 36% of your population that's considered cost burden. So the need is greater than what you have and what the state would mandate, where, you know, it's over a third of your population is spending more than 30% of their income on their housing costs, and that puts pressure, especially at the lower incomes, on trying to make decisions about what you pay for in any given month and can lead to housing insecurity. And then for some of these trickle-down effects that we've seen in the community, there are, there is an increase in year-round households that we've seen in the last 10 years. It could be that there's a little bit of a, you know, a COVID effect and a hybrid work effect happening there. People like to retire and move to Chatham as well, it's beautiful community. But we're also seeing this atrophied of younger students and younger families with children, and also this kind of prime working years age group of 35 to 44 has also decreased in the last 10 years. So I know that that's a concern for those in town who want to be able to provide attainable housing for year-round families and employees to live here and work here. Okay, so in summary, then, we're looking at this housing availability and cost crisis and a mismatch between the housing that you have and the housing that you have a need for, and it's really affecting all housing types and income levels at or below the 200% of area median income. And let's see, the area median income in Chatham around like $80,000 or $90,000, so even, I mean, you pretty much need $300,000 as a household in order to afford a single-family home in Chatham, which is most of your housing stock. So it really is putting it at a very, very tough spot for a lot of people. And then, the seasonal housing element, it helps the tourism industry, but it also, you know, adds to the compounds to this issue of not enough year-round housing, especially year-round rentals, being available for the demand, and that does lead to this commuter effect of workers who are unable to live near their jobs. So there's very little overlap between those who work in Chatham and those who live in Chatham. So what does that mean for goals and strategies? The first goal is to try to address this housing type issue, so trying to create new, conserve what you have, or convert existing year-round housing stock into more of what we, in the planners' speak, call the missing middle housing type. So, it could be on the left side of the screen, an accessory dwelling unit, all the way up to kind of that small-to-midsized walk-up apartment on the right. So this is from Union Studio, I'm sure some of you have seen this graphic before. And also looking at a broad range of income levels as well, so you want to try to serve the most vulnerable and housing insecure individuals, all the way through people who are, want to get in at a market rate, but the market rates are still not attainable. The next goal is to try to target specifically Chatham's year-round residents and workers to try to get more opportunities that are affordable for them. The third goal is to look at the seasonal workforce in particular, so that peak that you have in the summer, and trying to support the employers who have seasonal workforce. And then trying to strategically locate your housing to minimize barriers to development. So, looking at, I know you already kind of have some study areas in West Chatham and South Chatham neighborhoods that you're looking at. You also are lucky to have, you know, some wastewater system in place and to be building that out, so where you have infrastructure and where you don't have environmental constraints and things you need to be careful about, those are where you really want to target the growth. And finally, or not finally, because we actually have two more after this, you're looking to try to get the word out, further community conversations, further investment, financial, and staff, and volunteers around this issue so that you can maintain the capacity that you've built in the last several years. And one way you can increase that capacity is through your regional resources. There are many in Cape Cod that you have been partnering with and that you can continue to partner with so that you don't have to do it alone and you can take more of a regional approach for these really regional issues. And last but not least is trying to comply with 40B, so making that incremental progress on these deed-restricted units where you're creating or preserving ones that you already have and adding new incrementally over time. All right, so pause there before I dive into the strategies. Are there any, I covered a lot of information all at once, are there any comments or questions so far?
Not seeing any yet.
Okay. All right, so the strategies are broken into three main types. There's three main buckets, if you will. There's strategies related to planning, policies, or zoning, and those are the ones that are going to tie a little more directly into the Planning Board's work. And then there are those that are what we call local initiatives or programmatic strategies. So that could be anything from, you know, helping someone create an accessory dwelling unit through some sort of grant program or other ideas. We'll get into a few of them in a minute. And then the third bucket is all about capacity and coordination and education. And it's not meant to be, well, it is a roadmap, it's not meant to be a literal blueprint, it's not chiseled, you know, in stone. Think of it more like a menu of choices, and as we provided an action plan for you, there's a static one that's in the plan, but there's also going to be, you know, one that's in Excel or Google Sheet that you can update and work with as you move along. So we know that things, new opportunities arise sometimes suddenly and other things happen too, so it's always a bit shifting, and we want you to go with what works to make progress. Okay, so a few highlights from the planning policies and zoning strategies. There are a number of them related to zoning itself, so trying to make the type of housing that you want to see allowable and also more streamlined. So allowing for multifamily housing in certain districts, being a little more flexible about zoning around duplexes or accessory dwelling units and so forth. Also having design guidelines and standards, so there's a number of different ways you could do that, anything from literal aesthetic standards about how it works or how it looks architecturally, to standards related to accessibility and ADA, or standards related to, or guidelines related to green building design, for example. So there's a lot of ones out there, and it's really up to the community whether you want to go more of a guideline route or an actual standard route, and kind of which ones to adopt, but we gave a lot of resources to you in the plan to start exploring different options. And then also to have an inventory of potential housing sites that you're interested in, but it could be, you know, town-owned land that you're working on deposing for housing, or it could be private, you know, maybe it's bacon commercial office building, or something that could be appealing to an investor to try to turn into more of a mixed-use building. So one of the strategies that we talk about is creating what's called a pattern book, it's something that's used a little bit more in other states than in Massachusetts, but we like to draw on examples that we think- But we like to draw on examples that we think are, are creative ideas, no matter kind of where they come from, if we think they would work well in a, in a community. And so, the idea behind pattern books are to have, in this case, a sort of architectural style. Sometimes it's outright architectural designs that someone who is saying, I want to build, you know, I know I want to do a duplex or something and I can see where it's allowed, but I don't, I want to make sure it's going to get permitted, permitted quickly and then it's something that I know the community supports. And so, pattern books can really show different types of housing in a detailed way of what the community, community likes and wants to see. And then you can kind of, you know, pick different designs that work and it just helps to streamline things and it serves as more of a visual guide to those interested in, in creating housing. And the map on the right is your wastewater map, the sewer phasing map. So, you know, the, the area in red is where you have existing sewer and then there's different colors for kind of where that's going to be expanded. And that's just to highlight, you know, some of where you really want to start with some of these zoning changes especially. Under local initiatives and programs, we offer suggestions related to not just, you know, zoning for ADUs is one thing, but actually having people understand what they are, how to do it, helping them through the process, offering subsidies or especially for affordable ADUs, if someone were to create something that could potentially be deed-restricted or for, you know, a year-round tenant, let's say, that could be a helpful step to actually incentivize those to be created. And then offering some tax incentives for year-round rentals, expediting permitting for affordable housing going through if it, if it's not, you know, a 40B and offering, potentially offering some down payment assistance programs. And then the idea of a lease-to-locals program. So, Providence, Province Town, I should say, pretty near you, has the lease-to-locals program where they actually offer just a direct cash incentive for locals to convert their property into a year-round rental. So, there's, we offer case studies and, and things throughout the, the plan so that you don't have to start from scratch. You can kind of start from ideas from some of these other places, whether very locally or from across the country. And the third bucket of plans is capacity, education and coordination. So, as you, this could be more of a long-term strategy, but as you look to trying to build out some of these programs especially, it could mean that you might need to look at staffing for your housing, to staff those housing efforts. Also, I love the example, I think the community that started this idea was Concord, Massachusetts in terms of this idea of a housing roundtable. So, you're sitting down at least every quarter with, you know, the planning board and the select board and the zoning board and, and the housing trust and the community preservation committee of representatives from all these groups come together to, to talk about the housing production plan, housing needs in general, kind of what actually, what are we doing in this next year? How can we all work together to support, you know, the top one or two priorities for the next year? And so, you're constantly kind of in conversation with each other. Also, of course, your regional partnerships, that might be public-private partnerships. It might be with nonprofits to train your land use boards, to educate the public and having a really clear and effective communication plan and outreach plan around affordable housing as well. So, this is a little example from the Concord Housing Roundtable and also an example from the Citizens Housing and Planning Association, who's one of these housing groups that is, can, can come out and for technical assistance, no cost to the town, you know, lead a presentation on kind of myth-busting or, or other type of housing topics that might be of interest to the community. And I did mention the action plan already, so that lives kind of in a static form in the plan, but it also is going to live in an Excel document. And there are kind of two lenses, two different tables that we look at it through. One is where we're looking at the strategies and kind of which goals that they support because some strategies support more than one of your goals. And we want to make sure that every strategy in there supports at least one goal, but that could be a way to look at where you're going to get something bang for your buck if it's supporting multiple goals as well as, of course, timeframe and responsible entities. So, we think we got it as close to right as we can for this moment, but given that things change, we want to make sure that it's in a format where you can also update it if need be. And also be transparent to the public, you know, it's something that you could embed in, in your website and if people were curious about progress in any given topic or strategy, it's also a way to share information. Okay. So, that, that's all I really have for tonight, other than I can stop sharing this and open it up for discussion and questions or dive into any level of detail you would like.
Yeah. Let me just begin. I think, Katie, the 2018 plan, you mentioned that there are some strategies that were undertaken over the past five years. Could you sort of just refresh the board members on what some of those were, just so they get an idea that, that there has been some action in the past?
Sure. To name a few, one was the ADU bylaw that the planning board worked on, hiring a housing coordinator, which we've done by hiring Gloria. We also conducted a town-owned property inventory, which was presented to the select board a few years ago to look at what opportunities there may be for town-owned property for housing. And another one was where we ended up with doing the RFPs for private land for development. So, those were all goals or strategies within the 2018 housing production plan that, just some examples that, you know, that were acted upon.
Okay. Thank you. That helped me because I just got on the board back in 2018 and I don't think that I realized that all of those ideas had developed out of the housing plan from, from when that was proposed back in 2018. I'll open up to the other board members. Catherine, do you have any comments or questions?
I don't have too many, oops. I don't have too many comments. I would like to say, first of all, thank you. I think the, the study was done with excellence and the production plan is, is very clear and I think it's well done. First, I wanted to say that. I think as a planning board, we need to look at the, as you've mentioned, the areas that specifically are actionable by the planning board. We've already been considering some of those, but I would say, you know, our next step is to zero in on what initiatives we can take vis-à-vis zoning changes. And I'm, you know, as we've discussed already as a board, if we can add some of those to our agenda to try to bring before annual town meeting 2025, I would support doing that. When, a couple of points you mentioned, you mentioned an inventory of sites around town that would be workable as particular areas where housing density could be increased or multifamily homes could be introduced. I think that's also something the planning board has been looking at. We're looking at, for example, around the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, what we call sort of transition zones or buffer zones on the east. I think it might work well if we look around the town as a whole and see if there are other areas, specific areas that lend themselves better to multifamily housing development or development of a diversity of housing options that we could recommend some change in the zoning that would allow that. Those are a couple of thoughts that come to mind. I also just wanted to comment on the pattern book idea. Maybe not a lot of us remember it, but even long before I joined the planning board, the idea of a Chatham pattern book was something that's been considered in Chatham. It never got implemented. It's something I think might be worthwhile considering, again, we have a lot to work with already because we've got the design guidelines of HBDC that planning board has also adopted as our design guidelines. We have the information on form-based code that we implemented in West Chatham. So, we've, so I think we've got a lot to work with that we could put together a pattern book that might make these increased densities in different housing forms, such as multifamily housing, more acceptable to the community. So, those are just a few comments from my side.
Thank you. Warren, any comments?
Of course.
Okay. Good.
I'd like to add my thanks to all of those who participated in pulling these documents together. Tremendous amount of useful information that can serve any number of valuable efforts as we go forward. My comments are really not meant to be commenting or criticizing what's actually there, but it does seem to me that the plan or plans could really benefit from a bit of a look backward as to what has changed in those plans from the previous five years ago. Personally, I would expect most of the issues are pretty much the same. They may have taken on a slight new nuance, but along with what has changed from the previous plan, a bit of a pat on the back, Katie, to have all the items that you've mentioned that have been done, I think these plans would be more readily received by the town if we could pat you on the back a little bit and include in these plans what we have done versus the last plan as preamble to now this is the next five years and what we are going to work on. The, I, I was taken by the fact that there's a, what I'll call a lack of a quid pro quo discussion about the rezoning of virtually all of Route 28 west out of town to residential in exchange for creating four neighborhood centers in town. The idea being it's going to be going from commercial to residential, most of the space, but the town's neighborhood centers would have higher density and therefore create the opportunities for affordable housing, multifamily housing and so on. And I think that it would be helpful, again, in selling a new plan if we could put in context that we've already taken what I think is a major step towards increasing or what the town has already okayed by the creation in principle of the neighborhood centers for increasing the density type affordability of housing that would be developed in those The form, Catherine already mentioned the form-based zoning. I think that's a major, a major accomplishment really in terms of what has happened since I've been a member of the board. I think it has utility beyond the neighborhood centers, but we've been focusing on it, yeah, pretty much with a laser focus on the neighborhood centers, focusing on not what you can't do, which is what most zoning does, but what we want it to look like. And I think a great deal of effort has gone into drafting or the drafts we have for West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning, which are patterned 100% really after the concepts of form-based zoning. And I think that's a major accomplishment, but I also think it's one that is well worth highlighting because as soon as you start talking about greater density, different types of housing and everything else, the knee-jerk reaction of most town people that I speak with is no. And if you see what it's going to look like, that would be a big plus. So, I would suggest maybe highlighting that as an accomplishment as well as an element going forward. The last comment I'd have is that we have been focusing on only really one of the theoretical four neighborhood centers which have been identified in that quid pro quo back when. But I think that there, it would be really interesting to me as a board member, but also to the town as to some sort of a swag at assuming that we had zoning as being conceived for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center and extrapolated over four neighborhood centers, what might be the impact on the housing stock in a full build-out, build-out analysis that might go out 50 years? It might be a modest number of rental housing units. It might be a reasonable accomplishment or getting a significant chunk of what is needed and if it is put forward in the appropriate way with form-based zoning and if we've already agreed to create the neighborhood centers, we've already taken care of rezoning the rest of Route 28 as residential, et cetera, et cetera, such that whatever the build-out analysis might be for all four of those centers, it would be very nice to have, maybe not as a five-year objective, but as a, a 50-year objective showing what path we have chosen to go down. And of course, most of that benefit would only be as things were redeveloped, since there's not that much open space. But still, the concept, I think, would be valuable to help sell the document to, to the public. And I'm focusing on selling it to the public because as soon as we talk about zoning changes, so far, my experience on the planning board is if it's a zoning change, the answer is no. And that's, that can't be the answer and it shouldn't be the answer based on all of the input that we've been working on for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. But if the answer to the general public is going to be no, we could utilize these documents as a way to immediately, but over time, be able to sell it as a, a, a marketing document, not just a legal requirement of 40B. So, those would be my comments.
Thank you. Warren, Charlene, any comments?
Certainly I'd like to echo what the, my, the previous speakers have said. I like the idea of a pattern book. We all know we cannot zone aesthetics, but certainly giving an idea of what, what people might be amenable to. I know in, in my career, it was always, well, what does the town want? And it's like, well, I, I don't know. But I think the idea of a pattern book is good. I don't want to see a cookie cutter that everything looks the same, however. So, you know, I think the pattern book is, is very good. I think the information provided in, in the two documents was excellent and I was very pleased with it. And just one thing, the, the ADU bylaw, which we have, the state has taken care of, you know, making sure that it, it is now allowable by right. We are going to need to tackle that for the spring town meeting ourselves to, to update that for, for the bylaw. And that's one of those, okay, even if the town says no, it's still state override. So, you know, it's better if we are complying with what the state wants or is requiring. And, you know, if we want to keep it as a site plan review, think about why we are doing it as a site plan review and what it is we're reviewing specifically. So, but just echoing what you all said.
Thank you. Frank, any comments?
Yeah. I'd like to echo the comments of the previous speakers, particularly Warren. He stole my thunder, but that's funny because he said it a lot better than I ever would have said it. But, you know, it's, we, we have major initiatives on our neighborhood centers and it's, there really is only passing reference to that in here. And it is, if that's successful, I mean, it could actually achieve most of the objectives that, that we want. So, I, I, I love the idea of talking about it more and kind of projecting how that might affect our affordable housing stock if, if that's rolled out, that, that to the other, there's going to be five, so, total. I also want to say that it's a fabulous job. I mean, it's, it's, I, I was very impressed by what's here. I know you put a lot of work into it. One thing that does impress me though is that it's, it's an enormous amount of work. There's a lot of things that have to be done. So, we have limited resources. I know there's a proposal to increase staffing. I don't know whether that's going to I don't know whether that's going to happen or not, but I suspect that we need to prioritize because we have, I don't know, 44 strategies and there's so much to do and a lot of it, each one of those is a major task. So I understand that there's no prioritization in here and in fact, it's called out. It's that we have not prioritized or put it in any order. So that means that it's going to be left to us. For example, anything to do with planning, we're probably going to have to prioritize ourselves as to what we're going to take on first.
There's about a third of those strategies are involvement with the planning board. So at least the focus doesn't have to be on 100% of the items, but
Absolutely.
There's a more narrow list for us to actually flush through.
I was happy to hear that this is not set in stone, that in a sense, they're directional. You know, the idea of doing multifamily in all the residential zones, I can predict what would happen at town meeting on that one. But, you know, it's fine to have that as kind of an aspirational or a direction. I mean, the end result might be that we have an overlay that says, well, where do we want, you know, to allow multifamily or something other than just going and saying we're going to allow in all the residential districts? That's the kind of thing, I think, which could set people off. So there's some wordsmithing that I suggest you might want to consider where in a lot of the strategies, it says that we'll look at something or we'll consider something or we'll review something or we'll set up a study group. But on a lot of the zoning things, it says, this will happen. And, you know, so that's going to be controversial. So we might want to tone the language down a bit. So instead of saying we're going to make all residential districts multifamily, we might say, consider where we can do that in town, you know, consistent with whatever we want to be consistent with. So.
Yeah, and I just want to interject there. So we're really only proposing to allow for multifamily in residential districts that already have access to sewer.
Understood.
Yeah, and also in the, you know, the general residence or general business district, I should say. So it's not necessarily absolutely everywhere because we know that there's environmental restrictions and things like that.
Yeah, but of course, the sewer is going to expand over time. But yeah, I understand. So I had an awful lot of comments. I mean, but, you know, we just got the plan two days ago and I don't think it's worthwhile me trying to, you know, go through it and just with the understanding that this is directional. And then, of course, all of these things for planning are going to have to come to planning. We're going to have hearings and we're going to get input from a lot of people and it's going to go to the Board of Selectmen and we have to think about the politics of getting something through. With that understanding, I'm happy with.
Yeah, that's my understanding too, Frank, of how we're supposed to be approaching this. This is a menu of items and strategies. We, as a board, would take a look at some of our components and see which ones we think we should prioritize and move on. And others will be doing that in theirs. The tables in the back, I thought, were very helpful in identifying that because when I was first reading the needs assessment and I said, wow, this is a lot of strategies. And then when I saw it, there was a breakdown on that and that sort of helped give me the relief that we can tackle this with each of the separate groups that are involved that really need to be involved with this, not just one group.
Yeah. That's it.
Bob, you have any comments?
I don't think there's too many comments that I could make that people have not already said, other than thank you Gloria for all your work and we appreciate it. But I think everybody's pretty much hashed over a lot of it. Thank you.
Right. One of the things that we have spoken to in the past on this, when we were actually developing the West Chatham Neighborhood Center and our thought process with perhaps some of the other neighborhood centers is we're defining these with specific boundaries, but we always said that there was an opportunity to set up some transition zones around these neighborhood centers and those could be good opportunities for some of the strategies that you had mentioned in your report, whether there are some degree of multifamily, a change of density or transition in density, different housing types. I think that that might be an excellent one for us to tackle, perhaps soon after we flush and push through the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, hopefully at the Maytown meeting. So that was one of the things that I recall that we were actually suggesting. We do have in the neighborhood centers a multifamily component in it and that was not there when we first started out. So I think that there could be some significant pieces of it to support the commercial development. I think in the build-out analysis, that's one of the things that we're looking at, isn't that right, Katie, is what could that be as an idea of how much of the neighborhood centers could support housing? It's all about, you know, whether it could or again, from a financial standpoint, I mean, that's a component that's sort of tough for us to actually identify. You can't always apply a number to an area, but it doesn't mean that is, can be logically put forward from a financial perspective out there in the development world. In either case, I think that this is an excellent plan that was put together and what I'd like to do is propose that we adopt the housing production plan and I'd like to hear a motion on that.
Mr.
Yeah.
I just, Mr. Chairman, I didn't know if you wanted to see if there's any public comment.
Oh, I apologize for that. So if there's any public comments, I would like to entertain it at this time. I don't see anybody online.
No, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, oh, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to echo something that Frank brought out about the idea, and I think Art, you also touched on it and the board has thought about this before. Chatham, as the needs assessment has shown, there was no surprises in the needs assessment for me. I've lived in Chatham a long time. But Chatham is basically a single-family home community and has been and the whole, how to put it, the whole mindset of the comprehensive plan is maintaining that type of livability in our community. So I just think that as we go forward, now we're looking at a new situation where the housing crunch is much more critical than it was 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 30 years ago, when the comprehensive plan was being put together. But nevertheless, I do, I would anticipate that to bring this before the town, to get the town's agreement, because it will have to be, any zoning changes will have to receive two-thirds vote at annual town meeting, we might, rather than changing broad areas to multifamily housing, we might want to look at what we've been suggesting, that we look at particular areas of town that lend themselves well. These transition zones around the neighborhood centers would be a good place to start. There might be other areas that would lend themselves well to some increased density in the housing, but I think we need to think it through carefully and look at each, look at the possibilities carefully just because, and also some sort of visuals or pattern book will be helpful because Chatham has traditionally been a single-family home community and now we want to transition to greater acceptance of multifamily structures. So that's all.
Warren, another comment?
Yeah, I had one other comment. As I recall, the previous plans made reference to a density of like four per unit as, or four per acre as what had been supported by the town's infrastructure for water, sewer, et cetera. The current draft plans also make reference in several places to this four units per acre. I would suggest that that not be put down as something which is immutable in the last plan and the current plan because it will be put back in our face at a town meeting at some point, saying the town is now twice approved, a density of no more than four units per acre. We are in the midst of finishing our build-out analysis, but it's always our intent, I believe, certainly my intent, to come up with the right density for these neighborhood centers, which is likely to be two or three times that. It's not going to create lots of housing, but I think it would be unfortunate to have the renewed or the new long-term plans for housing, again, still make reference to this four units per acre, having been approved, once this is done twice, then it will be thrown up as saying, we've already said, that's it, four per acre. And so I'm not sure exactly what that means in terms of drafting changes, but I don't want that to be thrown back in the face of the select board or the planning board or the planning department.
Thank you. Charlene?
Really good point. If the board is amenable, I would move that we approve the adoption of both the housing production plan and the housing needs assessment, but also cognizant of that there may be some final edits based on conversation that we've had today and the Board of Selectmen will be having tomorrow in their review.
Is there a second?
A second. Warren Chain.
Okay. Thank you. I'll take a roll call vote. Catherine?
Yes, I approve.
Warren Chain, approve.
Charlene?
Yes.
Frank, Frank Scheer?
I approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Hannah Artz, bro, and I approve. Thank you. Appreciate all the help and contributions that you made on this. I failed to mention at the beginning of the meeting and I'll do that now, does any board member have to recuse themselves from any of the other actions on the agenda?
I believe I have to recuse myself on the next item.
Okay. Okay, so then we'll, the next item on the agenda is going to be the modification of site plan approval, acceptance of an ASBIL plan, certificate of compliance for 225 Middle Road, NextGrid. Is there someone to come up and speak? Yes. And I think, Katie, this is a slight, it's not really exactly as written here or what we're going to be discussing, is that correct?
It's really more whether or not the board is willing to accept the ASBIL.
Okay.
There's a couple of changes that did not happen with the original approval. One was the masonry wall around the battery storage area and then the other was the line spacing. Then I'll let you speak if there's anything.
Sure. Good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name's Nathan Collins, Director of Engineering with NextGrid. As noted, we're here tonight seeking approval of two minor modifications to the original site plan that was approved. The first one being the masonry wall and fence around the battery energy storage system. Since this plan was originally approved back in 2020, we've learned now that walls or fences around these battery systems impact emergency events for fire safety as well as general long-term maintenance. Back in March of 2023, we walked the site with Chief Tavano, went over the emergency process and he concurred with our assessment that the wall and the fence weren't necessary. I think originally the intent was it was going to be built to block noise to nearby residents. To our knowledge, since that system's been operable for, I believe, a little over a year now in terms of generation of power, there hasn't been complaints as it relates to noise. So again, that, for those reasons, that's why we're requesting that minor modification. The other planned deviation is the original site plan showed actual striped parking spots on the paved access drive. Because that site is secure and only accessible by members who have the lock to the gate and that paved area, the parking is clearly kind of defined and there's really not going to be more than two vehicles there at any given time, we just don't feel the actual striping is necessary for those two spots. So those are the two deviations that we requested from the original site plan approval.
Okay. And we did receive information from the fire chief that during a site visit, during construction, they confirmed that the wall, as initially proposed, would have created a potential obstacle to their operations. So they do indicate that removal of it is okay with them. Okay, if there is, you know, there's a couple of things that sort of jumped out, but I think if we go through some of the board members and ask them if they have any other comments associated with this ASBIL, because I think that's what we're only looking at for tonight. So Catherine, if you'd like to start?
I think I'm all right. I did just want to confirm just what you said after reviewing all the documents, that basically you're looking for approval of two changes in the ASBIL from the plan that was approved. And one is the omission of the concrete around the batteries and the other is the omission of the striping on the parking spaces. And you also want your bond, your performance bond released, is that correct? Or is that changed?
No.
That's a future meeting.
That would be a future meeting. We would like to get that done at the next meeting, but we wanted to make sure that the board was willing to accept the ASBIL. We need to make sure that there's a decommissioning bond that we need to make sure is in place.
Right, that's different.
That would be different.
From the performance bond.
Right, and so our intent would be to hopefully release or provide a certificate of compliance for the statement of conditions. Once that decommissioning bond is in place, the board could then vote to release the statement of conditions as well as the performance bond
Right.
At that time. Our hope was to do that at the October meeting.
Okay, understood. Okay, great. Just wanted to be clear on what our action is. I think other than that, I do not have any questions.
Warren, do you have any questions or comments?
I think I'd better not have any questions.
Charlene?
I have nothing.
Nothing? Frank Scheer?
No, nothing.
I have just a few. I think there was a component that was proposed on the original site plan, which was, let me pull this out. There's a rain guard implanting plan and I didn't see very much of anything developed on it right now, so that's something I think that should be attended to.
Those were all replanted, sir, early this month. We provided photo documentation to.
I'm not talking about the arborvities in the front, that?
No, understood. The plantings in the detention basin?
That's correct.
Correct. Those were all replanted back in early September and we provided photo documentation.
So we do have photo documentation of the plantings? There was a schedule with it for additional plantings? I don't know if that had been done or not.
A schedule for?
There was a schedule that was also provided to me or a purchase order of some sort, but I don't think they were installed yet, so have they been installed at this time?
All the plantings have been installed in that detention pond in accordance with the approved plans. Those were the photos that we provided showing those.
Okay, I'd like to go out and take a look at that again because when I was out there, it didn't seem like there were any plantings around the basin. So, and I think that's an important element of what we had asked for on the original plan and I, they're not looking for a waiver for that item, so I'd like to see it there. So I guess that would be something that the board members could take a look at between now and the next month when we receive further documentation on this. And the other thing is, is there were the arborvities that were done on the east side and the west side along Little Road. It's not a big deal, but I think it would be good if you have your engineer just cloud the area and identify how many of those were actually planted. I think it supports that you did do the work because it was noted on the approved plan that those were to be planted, and you did plant those. So I think, take credit for it, is what I'm saying. I don't want somebody to come back and say, well, you didn't, you didn't actually do this, and I think you did. As far as the masonry wall and the striping, I don't have any problem with eliminating those two. I was out there, and they appear to be, no issues associated with that, especially with the two parking spaces that are defined by the edge of pavement, so. I guess, is there, do we need to vote to accept or add an ASBIL or ask for an ASBIL? We really need to do that, correct? Katie?
Would an amendment, would a motion to accept the amended?
ASBIL.
ASBIL suffice? Or do you, or do you want, thank you, site plan, or do you, would you prefer to see an updated plan showing how many arborvities there are? Frankly, I'm fine with this as an amended site plan and as the ASBIL myself, but if you would prefer that there be more information on it, that I'm good with that, too.
I'm okay with approving it, provided they add those two components. That's all.
So it wouldn't, you would not accept this as the ASBIL, though, because they need to change it?
Yes, they're going to be here again next month with the bond issue, so I'll give them the 30 days to just take care of this, and we can do it all at once.
So I would then, if it's appropriate, move that we accept the amended site plan?
Yep. Okay. And do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I'll take a roll call vote. Catherine?
Yes, I approve. Thank you.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Charlene Greenall?
I approve.
Frank Shear?
I approve.
Ann Artzpru, I approve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I guess Bob can come back. Next item on the agenda is a recommendation to the zoning board for Zero Crosswind Farm This is a, just for everybody's information, this is for our input to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a driveway, and that's to be constructed in the Conservancy District. It is the only component that we're involved with in this particular recommendation. So if there's any comments associated with this, like the first, is there an applicant who can actually speak to this first? And if you could introduce yourself to the board?
Hi, I'm Joe Geralamo. I'm one of the property owners, and I will do my best to answer questions. Our engineer couldn't be here, so. But my understanding was the, because we would have preferred a permeable driveway, and we were told that the angle of the driveway made that impossible, and that we had to go with at least partially impermeable. And then we came back with a compromise of having gravel at the top where the cars would be parked, and then the two minutes asphalt for the rest.
Well, that's a new one on me. Catherine, can you start off with any comments or questions?
Yes. I'll ask my usual question when we have to do these approvals. It's always a little bit difficult to see what is there now. Our purview pertains to the driveway, and the driveway only in the Conservation District. And so can you show us, maybe if there's a laser pointer, what is there now, and what do you propose to add? What is the square footage of what's being added, and what is permeable and what is impermeable? Just so we have a very clear picture of what's there now and what will be added, and what's permeable and impermeable.
Sure thing. So right now, the lot is just yard. It's just grass. So the bit on the conservation area is right here. This is the driveway, as I understand, coming down here, and this dash line. And I think everything, I think this dotted line is the conservation area boundary, so just that very end bit is asphalt in the conservation area, and then this would all be asphalt up to here, and then I believe this dotted line in this area here would be gravel where the proposed car parking.
So this is all proposed?
Yeah.
Yes, there's no driveway existing now?
There's nothing there now.
Just vacant?
Right.
So this is all proposed with an asphalt on the, is it the eastern end?
Southeast. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I think the square footage on the plan said 270 square foot within the Conservancy District.
Okay. Great. The only other comments I have is we've gotten, which is a little unusual, we've gotten a few letters just before the meeting, so.
I have a few.
Nope, nope. We got a couple about this. And so I haven't really been able to review them carefully. I believe the letters refer more to the whole project. We have to be somewhat careful because the planning board's purview is just about the driveway. Nevertheless, I think we need to look at what they're saying because they're basically objecting to the project. One is from the state archaeologist saying that it's an archaeological sensitive site, and that before any building is done there, that it has to be evaluated. And then there's another from, that is from Brona Simon, state archaeologist, state historic preservation officer, executive director, Massachusetts Historical Commission, and the other is from Carolyn Whittle, who is in a butter?
Yes.
Who also has some concerns about the project. So because we got these so late, we have to determine how much of our purview is affected by these objections.
I think that I didn't see much of anything about this driveway access, which is the limits of what we have to say. There's plenty in those two pieces of correspondence. I would say we would put them in our file, but there isn't anything that was identified and focused on this Conservancy District 270 square feet.
Okay.
Which is, that's just the way the bylaw is set up. That's our limit of our review and recommendation.
Absolutely, yes.
Other boards would need to deal with the components of these letters, but we will, we'll put them in our files, though.
Okay. I'd be happy to address them if you want to, but they, these things did come up at the Conservation Commission, and yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could just make a comment, sometimes we could consider, if the chair feels that way, that we could refer in our recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals, we could just reference that there are concerns that have been brought up about the project, but we sometimes do that, even it's not our purview to consider those concerns, but we sometimes will mention that in the context of our recommendation letter.
Understood.
Okay. Understood. Warren, do you have any comments or questions?
With respect to the initial part of the driveway, which is in the conservation area, much of that is exactly the same place as the notes on the site plan, which show as, what's it referred to as, an historical pathway, blah, 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 that is made reference to in the document that we just received. What is it called? Vehicle tracks, historical, not visible. But when I went out and walked the site, those vehicle tracks are exactly where the driveway is going to be put. So we're being asked to sign off on putting in a, an impermeable driveway right on top of what is exactly on this site plan that we already have of an historical.
Well, our recommendation could be something different, though.
Yeah. I'm just saying, I wanted to highlight why I'm bringing that up. One of my questions was going to be, do we know anything about that historical track? Well, we know something because a letter has just been handed to us this evening, which says that it's, it's not a tiny little nothingness. It's could be a big deal. I did have one other question, and that is on the very north, northeast corner of where the house is laid out. Just off of that corner, there's about a one-by-two-foot concrete pad, something, cover. I mean, I've never seen something like that, and I was wondering whether that, what it was.
So I can, I can kind of address both of those. The historic track that goes through, as I understand it, was the old access route to the graveyard that's up on the hill behind, behind Crosswind Farm Road, adjacent to A-Lenard Way. As long as my family's owned the property since the 70s, it's basically looked as it has now. There is one area where you can kind of see where the path used to be. But if you go back and look at the deed that my family has from the 70s, it says that any right-of-way was relinquished with the selling of the lot. So as far as I know, there's no right-of-way associated with it. But as far as the other block, I've seen it before. I have no idea what it is. As far as I understand, there was no structure on that lot previously, so if it was a monument has been proposed or something else, I really don't know.
You know, I raised the question of what is it, only because to the extent that, I don't know, utilities were buried there or that went across the driveway that we're talking about or other times, because I have no idea what it is. I've never seen anything quite like it.
So you've seen it with, because it looks older than, yeah, like a current, anything related to utilities, in my opinion, but I'm not sure.
I'll sit. Charlene, do you have any comments, questions?
No, just, you know, speaking to the portion of the driveway that is under our purview. I certainly agree with the proposed condition that staff has suggested that the driveway shall be constructed of permeable material. I'm not comfortable with that being impermeable at all.
Thank you. Frank, comments or questions? No? Bob Dubus?
Now you come hit on something that I can know a little bit about.
Okay, good.
First of all, I see you have a trench drain there. See, I'm not, I'm not too in favor of trench drains because they get clogged and nobody takes care of them. So if you were to put something there, you could put a catch basin framing grate, and I know Mr., my buddy over there looking at me, is not like that. But anyway, they do make, they do make pervious asphalt.
Yeah.
Okay. And so you could put that pervious asphalt there and eliminate the trench drain and have the stone that's underneath the asphalt run into a basin so you wouldn't see anything and you'd be able to plow it without any danger to screwing up the trench drain. So that would be my recommendation, is to put pervious asphalt there on a bed of stone with some piping in there to go to the catch basin you're proposing.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll just add one comment. I don't see any reason why some pervious surface materials can be used here in this location. Again, it's just a section, it's, I think it's in a neighborhood of 30 by 12, so it's, I've seen it on much steeper slopes associated with this, so I don't see that as being an issue. Catherine, did you say you had one other comment, do you question?
I do. I just took a moment to review these letters a little bit more carefully, although I still haven't reviewed them carefully. And the one from Brona Simon, the state archaeologist, I just want to read the last paragraph that I do think affects our specific purview. She says, "This parcel is archaeologically sensitive. The Massachusetts Historical Commission recommends that an intensive locational archaeological survey be conducted prior to any ground disturbing activities in order to identify and potentially avoid impacting any significant ancient Native American archaeological sites." So they do say any ground disturbing activities, so that would include or could include the construction of the driveway.
Yeah, and I've only made, been aware of this since this morning myself. The concerns about the historical significance of the lot was brought up previously, and I had reached out to the Historical Commission and the Chatham Historical Society and a bunch of other people, and we had been basically waiting to hear back from the state to hear their recommendations on how to proceed. So I've only just heard them this morning. But I will say that my family has also owned the two lots adjacent to this lot, and back when they built the existing house where I live now, we did have the, a team from the Natural History Museum come out and do a dig, and they did find shell midins and things of that nature, and my family was completely cooperative with that. So I am going to look into this and see what we can do.
Yeah. I'm assuming a copy of this letter, because it was sent to the Conservation Division head of our town, this will become part of the Conservation Commission
Right.
...review and purview, and they won't let anything happen until this has been addressed. But I agree that.
It affects our recommendation.
Yes.
It's a public comment warranted here?
It's, it's up to.
I'm not familiar with this process.
Right, yeah. No, so it's up to the chair, if you'd like to allow a public comment, you can.
Well, this is such a narrow component in here, I think, well, we can start with the motion that what the staff has identified in here, "The driveway shall be constructed of permeable material and shall be constructed in a manner which permits the unobstructed flow of water." There was a couple other components, and could I hear some additions to this that I heard during? Catherine?
I would add that we adopt the condition that's proposed by the state archaeologist and say pending the archaeological survey, that if we send a positive recommendation, that we say pending the archaeological survey by the state, whoever does it, the Massachusetts Historical Commission, to determine, somehow reference that the, that it's been recommended that a locational archaeological survey be conducted prior to any ground disturbing activities. And I would propose that we cite that in our recommendation, that if we recommend, if we send a positive recommendation to ZBA, that we have our standard condition, that it's of permeable material, but that it's pending the completion of the locational archaeological survey.
I would so move that.
Okay. Any other items to add to that? Do I hear a second?
Frank Shear, a second.
Okay. Then I'd like to do a roll call vote on this.
Excuse me, excuse me one second. Would you rephrase exactly what we're going to vote on?
We're going to, we're going to vote on, we're going to vote on, "The driveway shall be constructed of permeable material and shall be constructed in a manner which permits the unobstructed flow of water." We haven't identified some of your pieces yet. And the last letter, last paragraph in the letter, pending that an intensive archaeological survey be conducted prior to any ground disturbance activities in order to identify any potential, potentially avoid impacts any significant ancient Native American archaeological sites. That's the addition. If you would like to add a piece?
No, no, I think what you said, I just want to make sure you had all the points on that.
Okay. So that would be the motion that we're going to be voting on?
And after that, we're going to have a positive vote?
This is for a positive vote, this motion?
This will also include the positive.
That's correct.
You didn't say that. That's why I'm trying to make that point.
Thank you for clarifying that.
No, I just.
That is my intention.
Okay.
That was my intention.
It's a positive vote with, positive recommendation with conditions. It's two conditions.
It's two conditions.
That's what I needed.
All right.
Thank you.
With that positive recommendation, let's start a roll call vote. Catherine?
Yes, I approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Charlene Greenall?
Yes.
Frank Shear?
Approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus approves.
Ann Artzpru, I approve.
Thank you.
All right. I'll get this down.
Mr. Chairman, I think you're doing a great job.
Yeah, thank you.
Great job.
First day on the job. All right, next item on the agenda is informal discussion on Zero Evergreen Lane. Perhaps this is something, do we have an, I think it's Dave Clark?
Mr. Chairman, I need to say that I have worked for people on this area.
Okay.
I have no, no monetary value in anything there, but I have worked in the area for twenty years, on and off.
Well, this is an informal discussion, so we're not taking any vote tonight on anything.
I just want you to know that I have been in the area.
And I don't think anything's been done in this area for a long time, so there hasn't been any
I'm the last one to work there.
Okay. All right. Perhaps, I, I've read a lot of the documents so far, David, and it's gonna be helpful for you to walk the board members through as best you can on this, because this is not a clean process that was done as part of the approval on this subdivision.
David Clark, Clark Engineering. I've been, I was contacted by the owners to, to help them out with this. Over the last several months, my office been contacted by some prospective buyers of the property, and I warned them all that there's still an outstanding covenant on the property, which prompted the owners to contact me. Looking at the record, there are two approved planning profiles for this road. I'm not sure which one is the operative document. The one that's on the screen shows a road, road improvements, I think widening it to, I think sixteen or eighteen feet, I can't remember.
My, my understanding of this is this was an, an initial document. If you take a look at over at the title block there and the revisions, you'll see that there's just a single revision on the bottom. If you take a look at the next plan, you'll see that this has been a modified plan of, of the same area, and you'll see that there's more revisions. So there, the first plan might have been what they started with, but this is where I believe that they ended up with, is
Yeah, there's, there's no documentation of it. The, the recorded documents of the registry deeds don't refer to a plan, so we don't know what we're working with.
Right.
The plan that's up on the screen, the, from what I've been told from the owners is, is that the abutters don't want it. Although it's been approved by the planning board, they don't want the road opened up into a highway. They like it the way it is, unfortunately, so.
So what is it that you, on behalf of the property owners, are looking for?
Direction.
Direction.
What's the planning board want?
Well, I, I
Which plan do they want?
I don't know if that's the way it's gonna work. You have to come before us and bring what you're looking to do, if you wanna modify a plan.
Well, we don't know which one we're modifying.
Oh, okay.
This one can't be done, because the road flare is in front of the north, well, it looks north, but easterly rounding into the subdivision is in front of an abutters property, which is not part of the subdivision. State of Massachusetts Highway Department is gonna require consent of that owner in order to build this road, which is unlikely, because they don't want the road. And, and looking at the documents, what, what's unfortunate is, when it went through the permitting process, nobody took into account what Mass Highway's gonna want. And nobody took into account the Wetlands Protection Act. So this is subject to jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission.
Correct.
This road has not been designed in accordance with the Wetlands Protection Act. This road has not been designed in accordance with Mass DOT.
Right.
Mass DOT is gonna want a significantly wider entrance.
Yep.
They're gonna want close to eighty feet at the end of the roundings, and they're gonna want twenty-four feet of pavement at the property line.
Yep.
That seems kind of excessive for one house.
Right. I, I think on the original plan, they showed a twenty-foot wide access point there at the property line. The revised plan that is there now shown sixteen feet. I think there was some revisions that occurred, and this was the plan that actually, that was bought into. And if you see that this extends all, much further up and into the site from the, from the previous plan, even though the previous plan had a wider opening at the throat there, that one was a much shorter section of what was actually going to be done. The interesting thing about this is this was approved. I mean, if they, if they, if the property owners or abutters want to hold the deed restriction, that means they want to hold, to have this plan built. And that's not what, what I'm here, I'm reading about in the comments from some of the abutters. The abutters do not want this to be built. I, I think what I would suggest for you to do is, is speak to the prop, the property owner who wants to take initiative, either passing this property or, or building on it, and come up with a suggested modification that would deal with some of what the abutters are looking for, and mastout, which wasn't done previously. I, I agree with you, the mastout piece is gonna be a big component, and it may not be anything that's gonna be acceptable to the abutters.
One of the things I was considering is not to do anything with the entrance. When the town put the sewer in, it got widened.
Got widened, yeah.
And so when that was all repaired, it got widened significantly. I think it's sixteen feet now across. So
Well, the other piece that wasn't done on this is the, and there was a lot of back and forth is, is with even a certification from the Highway Superintendent Jeff Kobe to sign off on the infiltration and catch basin system that was there, and nothing was built.
Nothing was built.
Nothing was built.
It's just a swale now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems to be working fine, because there's no, even with all the rain we've had and those deluges we had earlier this year, there's no sign of washout anywhere.
And actually, it actually goes onto that particular lot, that Lot 1B, is where it all discharges to.
Yeah. And then that's the one that's for sale. Yeah.
Did the drainage calculation certificate ever get recorded?
Yes. It got recorded in two thousand and nine. If you see, if you see the date on it
Well, I don't even see a certificate date on this.
If you see the date that it actually was approved by the planning board in that, it was several years later.
It took me a while.
No, I see that, but I don't see, I don't see a book and page on it.
Oh, okay.
At the registry of deeds.
I think that that was just a sign off by the planning board, because they wanted a clarification that the catch basin system was gonna be acceptable to, to the town, Chatham.
So if I might, if, I think I get what, you would like to see that the road not have to be constructed at all for the, for the construction of the new home?
I'm not asking for that. I haven't done, I, I haven't even been hired by the, by the, by the owners yet. But I was, I did do some research for a prospective buyer, and, and what alerted me was more so than Mass DOT is the Wetlands Protection Act requirements for drainage. That is about a third of what's needed, according to the stormwater regulations. It's, it's probably fine, because the, the stormwater regulations are ultra, ultra-conservative as far as infiltration.
Right.
But to be strict compliance with that, if you're looking at a drainage area, that's, that's probably gonna be three times the size or twice as deep, and
Is, is that based on the plan there with a sixteen-foot widening all the way up?
Yeah, and, and even more.
I can see what you mean by that.
Because there's a lot of, there's, there's two driveways that contribute to it.
That contribute to it, yes.
Yeah. So it's, it's quite an undertaking to redesign this to conform with Mass DOT and, and the Wetlands Protection Act.
All right, Catherine first, and then Bob.
Forgive, forgive me for asking this, but how do you propose to do it in such a way that we don't do what Mass DOT requires? I mean, it seems to me, I mean, it seems to me, you know, I'm sorry, but we're gonna have to do, they're gonna have to do what Mass DOT requires.
Not necessarily.
Unless you can tell me how, how that can be done, otherwise.
When, when the, when the sewer went in, the road was reconstructed partially, and it's, it's, it's wider than the, what's shown on this plan as the existing pavement. So I, I think once, if, if we go out and do a survey and get it all on paper, the board could come to a finding that, that the throat coming off of, the throat of the roadway coming off of the highway is sufficient. And then we don't have to deal with Mass Highway.
A new curb cut.
A new curb cut, yeah.
Okay.
Bob?
All right, I'm gonna stick my foot in my mouth now.
Now, looking for ideas here.
I'm the one that widened the road at the entrance.
Oh.
Years ago, years ago, the people got together, and they asked me to pave them a strip, because it kept rutting out. The road would have three-foot ruts in it, and I kept going over there and filling it with gravel and stuff. And finally, they got together and asked me, "Could you help us?" And I said, "Yes." This was ten years ago. And they said, they had the plan, and they said what they wanted was a wide enough entrance to be able to have two cars, one come in, one go out.
Right.
Okay? And if you, if you were there, the one road is on the left going up, and that's a private driveway.
That's a private driveway, yes.
And then, and then the one on the right, we made, I think it's maybe twelve-foot at the most, I think it might be eleven
I would say about twelve-foot is what I was saying.
Well, it could be eleven-foot.
Yeah.
Because they didn't wanna take and make it any bigger, because it was, it was okay. What they wanted to do was contain the water
Right.
from going over and running the place out. So there was a drainage where the drain, where the water goes now. I, I helped it go there. It always went there.
Yeah.
And like David said, all, all these years, it's never washed away, stable, what it does now. I looked years ago at the plan they had to put in, a catch basin and two or three leach pits, and we looked at it, and I said, "I can't do this," because of the, if you looked at the trees, there's huge pine trees there. It's very aesthetic. And I said, "If I do this, it's gonna destroy everything here." And to make the road any wider is not gonna help, because you're gonna take, you're gonna make it like a highway in here, and you don't need it. There's only four houses in there, I believe, and some of the people can go the other way.
Yeah.
So I said, "I can, I can make it work." And so I did make it work, and it's been working fine ever since. I did say that when, when the sewer goes in here, they will make and widen this road up.
Yeah.
And at that point, if they wanted to put drainage in, they should think about it. But I call it, right now, is a rain garden.
Yeah.
The water flows in there, and David, were you there, this, after this rainstorm?
No.
Okay, well, I know from other rainstorms, I'm sure it's fine.
Mm-hmm.
There's enough, there's enough fluff
Yeah.
in the ground there to hold the rain, and, and it actually just flows out and does its thing. And the entrance, you can, I think you could go, "It's been there for so long that it's worked, and why change it?" I think
Yeah, that's because subdivision was done in the early seventies, I believe, or late sixties.
Right, and so
That's correct.
And so I'm, I'm, I'm of the thing that they could widen it a little bit, but, but I would think that like, like Sears Point, like the other places, it's eleven, twelve feet wide, and if there's an emergency, they can get up there.
Yeah.
And, and
Well, I took a look at the area where they
I do, wait a minute, I'm not finished. I'm doing, I'm going to say that the road is not stable on the hill.
Right.
What it is, it's stable enough to keep it going right now, with, with minimum traffic.
Yeah.
If you start putting heavy trucks and bulldozers and, you know, excavators and stuff in there, that road is not made to take that abuse. I only, I did the least amount to give them the biggest buck.
Right.
You know?
Right.
And, and it's been doing very well for the past ten years, so that's a little background. But I'm the one that widened it, make it double, and, and I am against putting a sixteen-foot road in there.
Yeah.
Against.
Yeah. Well, when I was out there and I looked where the, where that proposed drainage system is, that, that, it slopes down quite a bit. There would be a significant amount of
It will destroy that area.
Everything that has to be removed, just to build that. Right. It is, you did, it's like a scupper there that actually collects it and puts it down in that direction there. And it, and it actually runs off on Lot 1B. So that's the, that's the, because Lot 1B runs all the way down
I, I don't believe you can use that, that Lot 1B to put a driveway in.
Yeah.
I believe the driveway goes to the top. They want to make it to the top.
The board approved access through 1A, so there is
There is an easement there.
I don't, I don't think you can
I don't think conservation would allow
Right, I don't think you could get a driveway where they want it.
So the access would be up at the upper end of this
Correct.
current roadway.
I'm not trying to take it away from you, David, but like you say, you've been there now, and I've, I've been, I've been there twenty-five years.
One of the things I would recommend to the owners that they come back with would be a plan that, the, the trigger point for road improvement would be on an occupancy permit of the house, because I'd hate for, to improve the road and then have all the trucks and
Right.
and, because not only is that panhandle portion of the lot got topographic issues, about two-thirds of Lot 1B does, so, so I think there's gonna be a lot of earth moving and a lot of equipment coming and going. And I, I don't know if you got a comment from the sewer department on what their target date is for this.
No, not yet.
I think they did
Is the sewer department's target
We can't, we can't hear you end up back there, you have to come up.
Hi, I'm Susan Shepherd, and I'm the owner of the lot.
Which lot?
Zero Evergreen.
Okay, this, this, is this what is referred to as Lot 1B?
1B, yes.
Okay.
So the sewer department apparently is planning to put the sewer up there between twenty, twenty-six and twenty-twenty-eight. And so they're gonna rip up that entire road at that time, and we'll repave.
Okay. When, what's, what's the timeline for that, though?
Between twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-eight.
Oh, twenty, oh, so that's, that's like
They're gonna, they're starting soon.
Yeah, that's four years down.
No, I mean, they're, they're starting
You're looking at the canopy and the width of that twelve feet, and Bob will tell you, you get an excavator in there to try and swing and dig a trench for a sewer main.
Right.
They're, they're gonna be taking over a significant amount of that canopy
Yeah.
in order to construct that.
I, I think they would. And not only that, if, whatever goes back in there for a roadway, if you stabilize the south side in some way, beyond what is there today, I think that would be something that would be important to do. But I, I don't know that the sewer department's gonna do that. They might just replace what you have, and that's it. They're not gonna solve your problem.
One, one more thing is, I, I honestly believe that when that lot is sold and gonna be built on, that they're gonna have to put a water main up there. There is, there is a one-inch service to this lady's house, and that's it.
Yeah.
So I don't think
I looked into that.
I don't know if they're gonna
It's not, well, I could not find a statement conditions that was recorded, but
We do have
This was nineteen seventy, so the board, it wasn't on the board health radar to require that the lot be served by town law. So they could put a well in on this property for a building permit.
So I go back to my first question, is, what would you like us to do as a board?
Well, we
Because you have a plan, it's Because you have a plan, it's been approved, it may not be, uh, a good plan. The butters do have some concerns and, and objections with it. I can understand that. And I think even the property owner has some concerns and objections on that. Um, I, I'm looking for some of, uh, your input from, I think your idea of actually going out there and finding out what was actually put back, because what, what, what is shown on these plans is not what's there now.
Correct, yeah.
That, that's gonna have to be done no matter what. And if there is a, a modification, and if there is gonna be a sewer, uh, replacement, uh, that would be important to document what that is. Um, the other thing is, if there's something that could be proposed on that one slope, on the, on the, on the, toward Lot 1A, I think to stabilize that, because that's, that will be an issue there. Essentially, you know, it slopes, it roadway, and it slopes again. And I think that's where the concern would be, and I think what Bob had brought up associated with it.
I don't think there's a berm on the right side going up. So I, I think a lot of it just sheds as it's coming down the hill.
Yeah.
Um, so your rules and regulations require a berm, and, and that's just sending the problem to one area.
And the other thing I would do about the stormwater is I agree with you that I don't think installing that, what was proposed, is gonna be a good solution. But maybe there's some other, um, avenues that you could bring forward that would still resolve it or mitigate it a little bit more than just what is existing today.
And, and that's part of the problem, and why this is so frustrating, is that DOT hasn't changed their standards since two thousand.
Right.
And the Wetlands Protection Act, especially the, the river's front area, which is what we're in, um, was enacted in nineteen ninety-six, so, and, and as well as the, um, stormwater policy were, were all in place when this was being reviewed, and somehow it, it was overlooked by the, the engineer. So I, I, one of the reasons why I'd suggest it that they come before you and just, is to pick your brain to see.
Right.
So I can develop a plan for them and, and, and see if they wanna go forward with it.
I, I would suggest you, I wouldn't put a lot of engineering into this. I would put the concepts down and, and, uh, share them with the board, um, or with community development, and they can give you feedback associated, uh, with this. A little bit of back and forth, and, and that would take into account what the butters want, which is, they don't want to see this built the way, way was actually approved, so, and, uh, and I can understand that.
I kind of prefered the first plan, but, uh...
Yeah. Well, the first plan would have taken out a lot, though. Uh, that was twenty feet wide, and it went up a couple hundred feet, and there was gonna be many trees that were gonna be removed.
But it didn't, didn't go all the way up the hill, though. That's what was, I liked about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it...
Please come up.
Is there any other comments by the board members?
It's informal, no?
Yeah, it's informal.
Yeah.
So I, I did have one other part of this. So Katie, maybe you can explain a little bit. The conditions, um, have three different paragraphs, and that's about whether the lot can be, it says that the lot needs to have these conditions met before it is built upon. And then it says that again in terms of getting, um, something to do with a mortgage. But then in the third paragraph, it says before it can be conveyed or built upon, which we all think was a mistake, that it said conveyed, because it was, had been conveyed several times before. We understood that the idea was that these road changes would only happen if somebody was gonna build on the lot. So when we bought the lot, we bought it because we owned the property next door, and we just didn't want anyone building on it.
Mm-hmm.
So we didn't plan on building on it. Then we sold the house. We hoped that the people who were buying the house were gonna also buy the land. But right, but currently, right now, it appears that it's not clear that it can even be sold.
Right.
Without this happening, but we already bought it without it happening, and we think that that was just a mistake.
Well, you, I, I would, I would address that at the same time you come up with all the other pieces to this, though. I, I don't think, I, I don't wanna put the cart before the horse.
Right.
I don't want...
I understand that.
To even entertain...
Right.
Uh, asking the board members to actually waive that without understanding the final outcome of what...
Right.
What we would be doing here, so...
Right, because much of this could change anyway, and so we might as well wait, is what you're saying. Okay.
Um, I have a lot of faith in David. He's, he's a pretty creative guy. I think he can come up with something in there.
Okay, okay.
I, I think the challenge is gonna be Mast Dot, though. If, if you have to do something with Mast Dot, that changes a lot of things. And if you, if you actually avoid that...
It, that's what I'm trying for, cause as you can see, Mast Dot is in the habit of urbanizing Cape Cod.
Right.
Um, with the South Orleans Rotary and, um, they, they like...
Yes.
Granite curbs and...
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Twenty-four feet of pavement, plus four-foot bike lanes on both sides.
Yeah.
So, um, I would, would love to avoid Mast Dot.
Yeah. Uh, one more thing?
David, would pre-existing, uh, act in their favor on that? Because it has been used for years and years and years, and, and plus it was widened enough for the two cars. And, you know, sometimes...
I don't trust them. I, I just look at the old...
So, so you do it?
I just look at the old cumbeys, and they wanted a sidewalk to nowhere.
Yeah, but that's in the plan, uh, the ultimate plan. I don't think Evergreen is in the ultimate plan.
But if you can figure something out without changing the width of the, where it meets...
Right.
Twenty-eight, then I don't...
That's what we're gonna try to do, or present something to you that...
There's no sidewalk that can go there.
No.
So that's, that's a plus.
They'll try. Mast Dot will try.
Yeah.
Well, they're gonna be walking on water, or they're gonna be walking on air and falling down the hill.
Well, you remember, there was no sidewalk on the other side of the street till the late seventies. Um, and they cut into that hill on, on the, on the north side.
This is true, but...
Uh, the, the other thing that I think Bob would mention this is, once you get past that, um, that throat, which would take you outside of Mast Dot's jurisdiction, I think if there was something done there so that it was clearly, um, two cars could pass, that would be helpful in that section.
Understood.
Very short section, it doesn't have to be hundreds of feet or anything like that. But I think that that...
I think we're close now.
That would, um, because you only need, you only need, it's sort of like a, a, a passing lane, one way or the other.
Yep.
Um, that would make sense, too.
Okay.
Uh, and I think if you can come up with some ideas on an alternative stormwater on it, and you're, you're familiar that the new regulations are coming out later on this year, so...
From, uh, DB?
Oh, yeah. So I would try to get some ideas, and as soon as you get...
Yeah, unfortunately, you know, country swales require clearing wide shoulders.
That's true, too. That doesn't help.
We don't wanna do that, and so...
Uh, we, Mr. Chairman, we, we discussed with some of the people about putting in a rain garden there.
Okay.
And the damage done...
Yeah.
To make the rain garden is worse than leaving it alone.
Than leaving it alone, yes. I agree with you.
I mean, it worked, it's worked for, since day one of people living there, and it still works, and, and so...
I'd, I'd put it under the road, but I need to leave room for the sewer.
Uh, this, this sort of was, was started back in the seventies when this was first approved, and this private road was actually made available, I mean...
Well, we, we still have a lot of dirt roads in, in town that were approved in the seventies, so, yeah.
Right, so...
Eastham is full of them, so...
Yeah. Um, so I would suggest that you bring a couple of ideas to, um, the community development staff, and they can share them with, with me, and perhaps we can provide you with some feedback. And then bring some of those to the board, then.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your understanding and, and help with this.
Okay.
There, there, again, this is an informal meeting. I don't know if there's, uh, we have letters that we got from the butters. We'll put them in the file. They're basically all saying the same thing, just they don't want to have the proposed plan. I think everyone here, including the applicant, is saying the same thing, that they're not looking to actually widen a road like that. I think we have to come up with what that is first before a lot more reaction. So I think we're moving in the direction that all the butters are saying. Uh, we don't know what we're moving into yet, so I'm not quite sure. We can reserve some of their comments for the next, the next round, because that might be more fruitful, and they can react to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
Good.
All right. I think, uh, the only other thing I wanna ask Katie on, on her chair's comments is, um, maybe you can update us on where we are with the consultants.
Sure. So staff met with the consultants last week. Staff met, is that better?
Yes.
Staff met with the consultants last week. Um, we've got another meeting set up for next week. I think we should have some data back from them before the end of September.
It's only a week, though.
Understandable. They, they were, they were fairly close.
Okay.
They said that really what it, once they have all of the information...
Yeah.
Running the numbers isn't going to be so hard. It's all, that's all the input first that has to go into it. So, right, exactly. So, so they'll, they'll have some data for us to start to look at. Towards the end of next week, staff will take a look at it. I wanted to ask the board members if they'd be willing, if we have information to provide or the consultant is ready to make a presentation prior to this only scheduled meeting in October, which I think is the twenty-eighth, would the board be willing to add an additional meeting for that topic only? And I just wanted to put that out there. At this point in time, I, I don't know that that will definitely happen, but if we have the opportunity to get that moving sooner, I think the board would like to do that, so...
Am I hearing a positive from the board members? I, I hear nods here. Charlene?
Yeah.
You're okay? Uh, Warren?
I'm certainly subject to, you know, not having something that precludes my attending a meeting whenever it gets...
Well, if it's gonna be the first two weeks of October, I already told, um, the staff that I'm gonna be on a road trip, so I'm not even gonna be, I'm probably gonna be in a car driving most of the time. So I, I will pass this on to the Vice Chair to lead, and I think she'll do an excellent job that she has for the last five years or so. So you won't miss me.
And, and, you know, we could, we could even have a conversation about what it looks like. I mean, the consultants, if they're remote, we could potentially even have a fully remote meeting, because they'll be sharing their screen. So we'll have a conversation with them and see what, you know, what the options are for timing. We also have to make sure that the rooms are available. There's a lot that will go into scheduling another meeting that we haven't, you know, we don't already have on the books.
Right, so...
But I think we'd like to get something earlier than...
So you look at dates and that?
Yes.
Share that with the board and see if we can accept that?
Yes, once we meet with the consultants again, uh, towards the end of this week, we'll have a better idea about timing.
Okay.
Okay? Great, thanks.
Uh, right, with that, I'd like to hear motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second. Second? And it is seven thirty-one. Is that right?
We have to vote.
Yes, I know, but seven thirty-one, just noting the time. Um, so, uh, let's, uh, begin with a roll call vote. Catherine?
Yes, I approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Charlene Greenall?
Approve.
Frank?
Approve.
And Bob Duvis?
Bob Duvis, approve.
And Art Sprou, I approve.